This conference will now be recorded.
The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any comments made to the council as they concern an item not listed on the agenda. However, a council member or mayor may make a statement of fact regarding the item, make a statement concerning the policy regarding the item, and/or may propose that the item be placed on a future agenda, or direct the city administrator to contact the individual to address. If you are attending the meeting via live streaming and you would like to make a public comment, you must email the city secretary@cityofroam.com prior to 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. You must identify each subject and plan to present. If the writer of a public comment is unable to read their own comment, it should be given to a member or associate that is in person and read the statement in their stead. Public comments made in person require the speaker to submit the sign-up form to the city secretary prior to the meeting, and the form must identify each subject that the speaker plans to present. A statement of no more than three minutes may be made. There will be no yielding of time to another person. Comments should be directed to the entire council, not individual members. Engaging in verbal attacks or comments intended to insult, abuse, malign, or slander any individual shall be caused for termination of time privileges and removal from council chambers. All right. I believe Shayna's got it.
All right. Our first speaker is Ashley Majors.
My name is Deborah B. Kraft. I live at 360 West Second. People were excited about the tax relief we will be getting from this year. From the state on our homestead exemption for school taxes, from the county on our property tax with a lower tax rate. So why are you taking that away by increasing our city tax? If the state and county can manage their finances well enough to be able to operate on a lower tax rate, what does that say about the way the city is managing our finances if we have to increase the tax rate? You seriously need to reconsider what this means to the homeowners. If we are not trying to compete in salaries with cities like Roanoke, Decatur, Fort Worth, Bridgeport, then our operating expenses would be lower. I know we need to take care of our employees, but you cannot spend like we have the budgets of those cities because we don't. When we get the income they have, then by all means, we would need to match their salaries. To do so now is irresponsible. You are spending a large part of our budget on salaries to make us comparable to larger cities with much larger income instead of taking care of the roads, water, and sewer. We have the taxpayers, we, the taxpayers are demanding that you start taking care of the city for the citizens. When fixing a building, it should be on the immediate needs first to make it safe, healthy, and functional, not what will make it pretty inconvenient. Being pretty inconvenient should come last. Where is the audit that was due by city ordinance January 29th and by state law March 29th? It's almost time to start a new audit for the year 2022-2023, and we still don't have one for 2021-2022. Are our finances in such a boondoggle mess that we can't get it completed? How can you set a new budget if you don't even know what shape our finances are in? Counsel, doesn't this worry you? Maybe it should. How much more are we going to spend on this audit? We have a secretary who by state law is also the treasurer, a finance person, and an administrator who should have all been able to gather up the information the auditor needs since they work with these papers every day. We shouldn't have had to pay CPAs. Until this year, we have never had to hire outside people to prepare information for the auditor. Why now? Makes one wonder what shape the finances are really in.
Do we have Shirley Mize?
My name is Shirley Mize, and I live at 170 Russell Street. The topic today that I'm discussing, the new ordinance on Gary Leveney. I think that the ordinance that has been presented to us, to the council today, is not complete. I think it needs to be fixed back and redesigned to, if we're going to update an ordinance to current rules, then we need to do it up to what I've handed you. And that House bill was presented and put in effect September 1st of 2021. And what that says basically is, it gives you the ins and outs of what the House bill is about, and it states that people that have handguns have a right to carry a handgun without a license, and that they do not have to go get a license because that's what this House bill was for. But you can get one if you want to go ahead and go through that safety process, which is good. I think that's a good one. Also, with it being incomplete and precise about what this new ordinance is, what am I saying? I hope we're not seeing another, next year, this new authority law that's getting us because of the rights. There was also a House bill, 1935, that talks about knives, how whether you can carry knives, and that it is legal to carry a knife. Now, the size of the knife, as far as how long it is, is restricted in a certain way, but you are able to carry those knives. So I'm not sure as far as where we're going with our rights of carry, but I think that we need to redo that and make sure that if we're going to pay for an ordinance to be changed, make it be.
I'd like to make a statement of fact. We are mirroring the state law, correct? We're not changing anything. We are merely mirroring the state law, and we can do nothing different. I'm just saying. I want to correct you because there's a lot of miscommunication, and all we are doing is saying, this is the state law, and this is what we're following.
That concludes public comment.
All right. Let's move along. City Council meeting September 28, 2023. We'll, wait a minute, we're having another one this month? That'd be three meetings this month. Today's the 24th. We had one on the 10th. Today's the 14th. I am so sorry. I apologize. I was thinking we didn't have another one this month. I'm a week ahead of myself. Thank you. City Council meeting September 28, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. I apologize. Any other announcements?
I have been in contact with the Texas Water Development Board regarding a presentation they have on what the state offers relative to programs to ask to finance and actually accomplish upgrades to our west wastewater plant and water. And there are three dates that will be available for a 90-minute presentation. And one of those dates would be Tuesday, September 26th, at 1:00 p.m. On Wednesday, the 27th, they have several time slots in the morning. And on Thursday, September 28th, they have also three time slots. So I guess my question would be, are they, if anyone has any preferences for these presentations, at what time? I may go ahead and ask them to open it up to the public so they could also attend. It is a virtual meeting, and so we could get informed about the programs the state has. I know that there was some legislation this year regarding rural water availability, and there might be some updates we might need to know about. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of that, and with the council's permission, I'd like to go ahead and arrange one of these dates to have this presentation.
Is that not something that you can just flip on your computer at home and then listen to it?
Yes.
It is something, you can do that?
Yes.
Okay.
And so I think it's a situation where we'd open it up to the public and make the time available, and anyone who wants to attend it can get informed.
I'll just throw it out there, the 26th at 1:00 p.m. was the first one.
It's an announcement. This is just an announcement. So you can make the announcement.
All right. Gotcha. Thank you. Okay. Let's move along. And we've got two items on here, and I'd like to move that consent agenda down to regular agenda if I have no objection from council. For these items for discussion. Okay. So we'll move it down to the regular agenda. And then we'll go to monthly staff reports, any other comments that we need to... Board minutes. Okay. All right. Let's go to the public hearing. Rome City Council to conduct a public hearing to hear citizen input regarding the proposed budget for fiscal year October 1, 2023, to September 30, 2024. It is 6:14, and we will convene into public hearing. Yes, Mrs. Mize. Would you come up and speak into the microphone, please?
No one signed up for this item to speak.
It's a public hearing. I didn't realize they had to sign up.
You have to sign up.
We have to sign up for a public hearing? Thank you.
Can you hear me? Turn the mic on. Yeah, it's on. Hello? Shirley Mize, 170 Russell Street. Pay raises on this new budget is at a 14% rate increase. I looked online, it's saying that online for current, for 2024, employees' budgets are showing a 4% pay raise. Biden is announcing a 5.2 for his federal employees. Companies are budgeting for a 3.8 pay raise in 2024. Carryovers. What did we not spend in our budget last year? I'd like to see that because that needs to be carried over and used for this new year's budget. If we're going to have that type of pay raises for employees, and I'm not saying they don't deserve a pay raise, they do, but how are we going to address getting back some of that money through the Aurora fee and through the PMB fees that we charge for those services? Our budget is basically, has a large shortfall on the police department. Can that be improved? Our court system can't stay up with what our spending is for our police, and I know that we're not supposed to be a profitable city. I get that, but there's something that can be helped in getting this within reason. I feel that that needs to be looked at. And I didn't see any events on the budget this year. I was totally surprised. As many people that have spoke up about these events, that these residents would like to see, but yet we're not going to do that this year. And what does it take to do that? I think it's important that we look at what we're doing. I think it's important that we make the right decisions on what we're going to give to our city to spend, and I think that they should be cautious on their spending, not just, oh, I need this. And don't get me wrong, I do support them, even though I speak up, it's a negative factor because I speak up, but I do support our city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other? Yes.
Well, hello, council members. I'm Ashley Majors. Been a long time. Council members, I'd like to say thank you for what you're doing. It is a hard job to volunteer your time. Thank you to Ms. DeGan for working on this budget. Council members, I ask that you look into it and ask questions. I've looked over it. There is a lot of great stuff in there. I've also looked at some things that I have questions on, but everything seemed, to me, great, but there are some, the gas, time cards. I've reached out to Mr. Loftus. You know, citizens, I think that's an issue, since they're listening. Either come to the council meetings or reach out to your council member. That is the best way. But back to the budget. The only way is to look further into it, but I think we are doing a great job. But other than that, that is the only thing, is council members, you need to do your research. That's the only way. It's up to you. But Ms. DeGan has done a great job. It is a hard job to do, and I think she's doing a wonderful at it because it is a hard job, is to do our budget because we are a city. And, you know, we need our roads, we need our water, and that is the two of the problems that we are in, and we have been for a long time. Our water, I mean, our road budget, $120,000, is not going to cut it. And one of our council members said, you know, one of them at $1 million, that $1 million isn't for a road, it was for something else for a road that somebody said we needed $1 million on. Look into it and ask a question for that road. But I've spoken long enough, but thank you so much. Keep doing a great job. So it's a hard job for a volunteer. Thank you again.
Thank you.
I do echo Ashley Majors. Amanda, you've done an outstanding job in breaking it down. You put the time and the effort. I really appreciate that. Counsel, as a citizen, it's refreshing to see all y'all getting along and moving in the right direction. You guys approving the pay raises. We finally stopped kicking that can down the road and say we support these men and women, and now we're doing something about it. I know it's a tough position. You get a lot of darts thrown at y'all. Doing outstanding job, so you guys keep it up.
Are the pay raises approved?
Yep.
For the, our police and fire department?
Hi, Daddy. Hi, Daddy.
I'm confused. Did I ask something wrong?
I think what Carvin was saying, that this is for you to give a statement, not a question and answer kind of...
I mean, I heard him say thank you to the council for approving them. All I want to say is, if the council has not approved them, I hope they do. I mean, I am so safe in our city and with our forces, the police department and the fire department, I cannot say how much I do, and they are worth every penny, plus some. And I mean, I know we need money for other things, but, you know, our city will be nothing if we don't have proper police force and proper fire departments. So, you know, whatever it is, if you have it, I vote that you do, and I would think that would be the right choice for all of us in Rome. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Going once? Going twice? Okay. We will close the public hearing. All right. Second public hearing, Rome City Council to conduct a public hearing to hear citizen input regarding the proposed tax rate for fiscal year October 1, 2023, to September 30, 2024. It is 6:24. Open the public hearing on that one. Yes, ma'am?
I was looking online to see where our other cities near us were at on their rates, tax rates. South Lake is at .319, Keller's at .312, Wise County is at .265, Hasslett is at .249972, and New Fairview is at .25801. So as you see, we have low, low rates, but I do want to say, with the tax value or the appraisal value increases, you've got a 14% increase from the appraisals. So you've already got a tax hike in what we're doing. So I would request or ask to please consider the rates of where it needs to be in life for our citizens. With the economy the way it is right now, people are not getting by. I feel that we all need to take the initiatives to care and to make good choices here, and 50 cents is not a good choice. I think that we have a, we have funds, I think, on grants that can help us do some other things that we're not looking into, but that's just, that's down the road. I do appreciate your time, and thank you.
Any other public comments?
Deborah B. Kraft, 360 West Second. I have to agree with Shirley on the fact that 50 cents is quite a hike, and with all the new property tax, we do have new housing in the city limits we're getting new tax from. We have QT going in, which will increase our sales tax, so we will have an increase in income, and I don't think we need to gouge people that can't afford these families. We want families here, that the younger families are being priced out of this town. They, all those new, you know, if they've got a new home here or buy in Crown Point and can't afford the tax, we get a foreclosure, and we lose that family. So we need to keep it where people can actually remain in town, and, you know, it doesn't matter to me, my taxes are frozen, so no big deal. But there's a lot, so many people here that it's not, and we've got to consider them if we want to keep citizens and younger families in this town. Thank you.
Joe Hernandez, 105 School Road. Yeah, I know we talk about taxes, and nobody wants to pay any more taxes, but I think our city is at a critical point to where we need to start over. I wish we could have the property values of South Lake. I wish we could have it down. And somebody, please correct me if I'm wrong, but if you're 65 or over and you're disabled, that your taxes are frozen. Is that correct?
Tax rate.
Tax rate. Okay. So I hope, I don't hope, I mean, I obviously don't want to pay anymore, but we have to increase our tax rate to get the city streets, to get the events, all these things that everybody wants. We can't do it with the amount of money coming in or with what QT is going to bring us in. So, counsel, you have some of our support for raising the taxes, even though it's going to hurt, but that's what we have to do to start moving this city in the right direction. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Yes, ma'am.
And once again, I agree with Joe. I mean, the city wants a lot of things, the city needs a lot of things, but the only thing that's going to help pay for those things is a tax increase, no matter what. Mine are frozen. Sorry to say that. I would pay them, I would pay more if I had to. And I think there's a lot of families in here that, in our town, that are able and willing to pay the increase to get the services that they would like. So I hope you consider raising our taxes and getting our city the things we need and want. Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right. It's 6:30. Close the public hearing. All right. We'll go down to the... We'll go down to the consent agenda. Approval of Resolution 2023-18, updating the personnel handbook.
Yes, ma'am. We were asked to bring back an update to the personnel manual as it relates to the use of take home vehicles and the public works department specifically is what this policy will cover. The police department guidelines will come through Chief Debus through their standard SOGs, as he calls them. So I'm expecting those either the next meeting or the one thereafter. But these are reflective of what we have conveyed to our staff currently. It was already authorized for them to start using those vehicles. And so they have done so. But we are bringing this back to you for review so that you know, we did get it in the handbook as requested. Happy to answer any questions?
Motion?
I guess my only comment is that, you know, we need to remind the employees of the city that they are under observation by the public.
They're well aware of that, I will tell you.
I just want to make sure because I know I reviewed some old meetings and there was someone who got up and made comments about that situation. So I just think that's a good reminder to have.
Thank you.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approval of ordinance 2023-05, updating section eight point zero five point zero zero one of the Rome Code ordinances regarding carrying weapons in the city limits. I noticed there were some comments on Facebook and I think there's just an awful lot of confusion with this. So I'll turn that to the city administrator and ask her, I know that that, where is that? There was supposed to be a resolution in here.
There's an ordinance relative to this item was in the packet.
Okay. There it is. All right. And I just want some clarity. Because it reads, I mean, it says an ordinance of the city of Rome amending section. So you're amending it. Is it, how will that read when you pull up municipal codes? How will it read? It's not going to read this. How will it read? Well, the text down here below says carrying weapons.
It's going to show the amended language.
Okay.
Yeah.
Revised to read.
One and then it's going to amend that. Eight point oh five is set up.
Okay.
Again, the intent, when we looked at the ordinance, the original, the base ordinance was adopted in 1999, as I recall, and the legislature has amended multiple times since then. The gist of this ordinance is simply to put us in compliance and say we defer state law, which is what we had to do anyway. So it's just.
So when when you pull up the, when you pull up the the ordinance, it will go on to say revised to read as follows. And then it will say, chapter forty-six of the Texas Penal Code is hereby adopted as the official guideline?
That is correct.
It will say that.
That is correct.
Okay, because I thought I saw some reference over here that that it would not be included. But it will be included in our ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay. If we've got listeners that were on social media, hopefully that clarifies that. It will read carrying weapons of article eight point zero five, revised and under the that it'll say, chapter forty-six of the Texas Penal Code is hereby adopted. Is that what it's going to say in codes?
Yes, ma'am.
Is hereby adopted as the official guideline for carrying of weapons within the city of Rome, Texas. Material contained in chapter forty-six of the Texas Penal Code shall, wait a minute. Material contained in the chapter forty-six of the Texas Penal Code shall not be included in the formal municipal codification of ordinances. So it won't list anything. It's just going to have just those, just that line right there.
It's going to have the provision you just read.
Yes.
Be in our muni code section when you go look up eight point oh five.
Okay.
But chapter forty-six of the Texas Penal Code is multiple pages long.
Yes.
We could have copied that in whole, but we don't really want to do that. So all we're doing in the, in our ordinance is referencing to the state statute.
Go look at chapter forty-six.
Go look at chapter forty-six.
This would be the the second part of that, that, that ordinance at eight, eight point zero five zero zero two right here where it lists those who can't carry, which is pretty broad. Because basically it's over twenty, under twenty-one and. All right.
I think you flipped. Yeah, you went to the old section. I think they're on the back.
That's what it's there.
Yeah, that that's the old language there.
But that's what it, that's what it's on the, that's what's in the packet. Okay. But still, some of that hasn't changed. Still got to be over twenty-one and you can't have a crime. All right.
Well, the bottom line, a citizen that has questions about what the law in the city of Rome is regarding the carrying of weapons is they can refer to state law, chapter forty-six, and they can educate themselves as to what the law is.
So if somebody gets stopped in the city of Rome and they've got a handgun with them, they're not going to be in trouble.
Well, I can't say that for sure.
Well, if they haven't done anything else.
Their obligation as any other citizen
You advise your officer that you have, that you have.
Is to know what the law is before they carry a gun. They need to look it up, make sure they are qualified and they meet the requirements. And if they do, then our officers will comply with the state law.
Got it. All right. Then we'll need a vote on that. I need a motion first.
Make a motion to pass the ordinance.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we'll go to regular agenda. Discussion, any necessary action regarding ordinance number 2023-06, adopting the budget for fiscal year October 1, 2023 to September 30, 2024. So we'll need a vote on that. No, we need a motion.
I think there's some conversation before we get that far. So counsel, I do have a very short presentation for you. There are several slides in here that we do not necessarily need to go over again, but there are still some decisions that haven't been made relative to the tax rate and formal votes taken on the budget itself. One thing I want you to make note of is on your budget page, on the very last document, there is a formula error. If you'll flip back to utility fund, it's, it's actually the very last page, which I believe is page forty-four. That shows a negative number that is supposed to be a positive number. So there is no use of fund balance in any of the funds that we have. So we are, we do have revenues over expenditures in every fund that is contemplated. So if you will make that note and before we post the final approved budget, I will fix that formula error so that it's clear to everyone. As we have talked about before, counsel, we did post for the de minimis rate. And you all will recall that I also posted another ad right next to that rate that stated that you were considering up to that. It gets very confusing for residents that don't quite understand how the ad valorem tax rate works in addition to your tax base and your valuation. It is a difficult, complicated mess to unravel at some times. So whatever you decide to set it at today, we do have, for the most part, unless you pick a number that we did not particularly discuss before, we do have the necessary documents to swap out, I believe, four pages in your budget. And we have the corresponding ordinance from which to pass. We have discussed the de minimis rate, the voter approval tax rate. We discussed holding it as the same tax rate as we had last year. We also had two tax rates that Mr. Loftus put forward as potential items for consideration. And we also have the no new revenue rate. I would suggest to you that the no new revenue rate is really not one that's on the table for discussion. It's a $400 difference between that and the voter approval tax rate. And it's not going to move any of our needles one way or the other. So I did take that variable off the table. But if you pick one of those other four or five, we are prepared for you to pass the budget this evening. And we do have the documents to support that. So looking at the certified values for the last three years, we did have some conversation this evening about new valuation that has come on the roll. You will see that the county gave us the new valuation rolls and that's just under $4,000. That's not indicative of a great change in our tax base itself as it relates to new builds. There are a lot of new homes that are going in around us. However, they're not within the city limits. We may see different in the coming fiscal year that we're not aware of. But currently, we do not have big growth in new valuation. You will also see that the increase from twenty-one, twenty-two in the value to twenty-two, twenty-three is 22%. So we are seeing improvements within Rome. We are seeing valuations rise. And as a result of those valuations rising, that creates a downward pressure on your tax rate. If you adopt anything other than the no new revenue rate. So if you were to hold steady, which is what Boyd does, they set theirs at about sixty cents and they've held that rate steady for several years. So regardless of what their tax base does, they keep the rate the same. North Lake does the same thing. I believe they've had the same tax rate for almost 20 years. This is also something that I have in other cities. So you're not quote unquote changing the rate. You're holding it as it was. You do have to advertise it as a rate change or increase depending upon where your, your no new revenue or your voter approval comes in. But that is one methodology through which you can hold steady on your tax rate, which provides some predictability for your residents. So when you look through that, you have looked at this slide before. I've also included some other definitions which we won't go over. But in case someone's tuning in for the first time, it gives them some more information. This tax, this slide, we also looked at your certified taxable values from 2012 fiscal year to 2023 fiscal year. You will see we've had 123% increase in valuation. That is good for the residents. That's good for the tax base and the diversification in and of itself. And it does show that Rome has been growing over those years. When you look at property tax revenue itself, you will see the breakout between MNO and INS. We have discussed this at previous meetings. We do show that we do have certain debt rate. The 432,000 for twenty-two, twenty-three is going to decrease significantly. I think that's something that has gotten lost in a lot of the budget conversations. I have and explained to you on several other meetings that we've had that your INS portion of your tax rate is actually going down by nine cents. But I don't know that that's, it's, it's hard to see that when you're talking about the whole rate and not the two sections of the rate. When you look at sales tax revenue, you can also see here that we have had pretty steady, if not increasing, sales tax revenue that has come in year over year. The city has also done a very good job of being conservative in those predictions. What you don't want to do, if you look at the twenty-two, twenty-three year, is predict a million and a half and only get a million two, because then you are short in your revenue. So you always want to be conservative in any of these predictions because your sales tax revenue is what they call income elastic. It moves back and forth with the economy as it is. And so you want to have a nice balance between your ad valorem and your sales and use tax. Generally, it's anywhere from a sixty, forty split on ad valorem and sales tax, because if you rely too heavy on that sales tax, you can really get your budgets upside down very quickly. I also left in the tax rate history, regardless of what counsel decides to do this evening, you have posted for the de minimis, which is the point five zero four, I believe, is that number. Either way, even if you select the de minimis, you're still going to be in the bottom third of the tax rates that have been passed since 1994 in this city. So you've done a very good job of holding the line, but you can see where that tax valuation increases and it causes that downward pressure on your rate. And as we've talked about before, the no new revenue rate is designed to give you the exact same amount of money you received from the year before. With costs going up, with service demands going up, there's not very many businesses or municipalities that can exist on that type of a funding schedule, if you will, without being upside down. So we've done a good job of maintaining that. This is also just a different variation of your tax rate for the last five years. And again, it has moved back and forth depending upon your INS rate. This was discussed at the podium during the public hearing. When you look at the tax rate comparison, yes, Haslett and some of the other cities are lower. They do have a different tax makeup than we do. But if you look at our peer cities here within Wise County, you can see that we are significantly lower than Bridgeport, Decatur and Boyd, who is our next nearest neighbor in that regard. I have checked these based on their budget and their approvals. So these are pretty accurate for the 23, 24 fiscal year. And regardless, I do show the point five oh four here in your slide deck. So regardless of what counsel does, you're still going to be in the bottom half of this chart as well. I also provided you in the last several discussions, budget assumptions. The tax rate information has been posted for the de minimis. As we've discussed, the numbers in the budget were built on the voter approval rate. And if I could take just a moment to re-explain that, we are living within our means, given the current budget based on the voter approval rate, which is the lowest number that we have shown out there, which I believe is about three, three or three, five for the tax rate. If, when counsel discussed this, if you selected anything above, you made it clear that you wanted to reserve those funds for infrastructure and street repair only. None of those funds are built into your budget. They're not used for salaries. They're not used for events, as mentioned in the public hearing. They're not set aside to go for anything but streets and infrastructure repair. So I want to make that very clear because there has also been some discussion on social media and in some of our surveys that we received that people want to feel like they understand where their tax money is going. So I've tried to, as you will see in the budget, expand on what we've provided in the past, give some information behind the numbers and not just the numbers, as well as delineate clearly that whatever rate you all select tonight, if it's above the voter approval rate, it could be, it would be reserved for streets and infrastructure in that regard. The building maintenance funds that we have talked about and others have discussed as far as how staff has used those in the past year, the $50,000 that was allocated to public works, police and fire have now been reverted to $1,000 per facility for this coming year. As I discussed in our workshop and at some of our other meetings, if we have an air conditioner go out or something occur, these line items will have to be adjusted because that will not cover that. There are, again, no use of fund balance in budget projections. Every fund is within its means and does show revenues over expenditures. We still have budget neutral revenues and expenditures in the base budget such as grants. I explained to you, if we don't receive the grant, we don't expend the funds. We are going to look at capital improvements and infrastructure. As we've discussed at your next meeting, we will have your financial advisor and your grant works team on hand to discuss what options exist for us in those areas. And once we put together a direction on capital improvement, I will create an addendum to this budget, which is a capital improvement plan that we will want to amend to what we already have. As I also discussed, every department has had an increase in worker compensation rates through TMLIRP. Say that very quickly. It's been factored into your budget numbers. We also have between a 10 and 12% increase in health insurance, which is not unexpected. That has been factored into your budget numbers. I have also added fuel, the city cell phones for the sergeant's uses, as well as the additional firefighters and the full-time administration person, all in your budget for tonight. We are still showing revenue over expenditure even with those decisions. So as we move into the fund overviews, you do see here that general fund, which we've talked about is our main checking account. We've been very balanced in our approach of revenues and expenditures and lived within those means. When you turn to the next slide, this is some of the information that I have been working on with the pre-audit team that you did not have prior to this budget year. This is one of the things that I discussed with you before, that it's very difficult to manage a city if you don't know how much you have in reserves. So we did have several accounts. We moved to a consolidated cash account. We are getting those properly allocated and making sure that the internal software systems, both our bank reconciliation software and our internal financial software match exactly what our bank accounts show and that we have all the restricted funds properly marked. One thing that I have experienced and seen with cities, especially if you're small and growing, you may realize that you received a million dollars from P and B for water restrictions. But if you're not properly watching that restricted funds, you can spend it twice and then you'll end up being in the hole. So now that we have these things properly allocated and shown, you will see that we have an estimated fund balance at the bottom of $880,000, which is in your main checking or your general fund account. When you divide that by the amount of money it takes to operate the city on a daily basis, it's about $7,900 each day. So we currently have about 111 days in reserves. The minimum we want is 90. I prefer closer to 120, just given that we are somewhat dependent on sales and use tax. But that is something that counsel, as we work through this next coming year, I'd like us to review our fiscal and financial policies and you will make that decision as to what comfort level you have for that. Now you will also see second from the bottom, the $220,318. There is an account, and as you'll recall from our previous discussions, we had 20 plus. you'll recall from our previous discussions, we had 20-plus different checking accounts about 18 months ago, that were in a, now been moved into a consolidated account, so we have better control and oversight of those. It's been my understanding that as we've had, say, when the fire department was purely volunteer, when the parks department was very volunteer, we had residents who were heading up those programs and would set up an account to keep track of the money, which is great. As those residents roll off, or as we become more of a paid department in the fireside, we need to make sure that those are accurately accounted for in our general fund. So one of these funds that you had was a general fund savings account. I need to do some additional research to find out how you intended for that to be used back then, but council will need to make that decision, because if you look at that $220,000 that's quote-unquote "in the savings account," council's going to have to make a decision whether they want that to be restricted for emergencies only, or used as available cash in fund balance. So if you don't restrict it, you would have 139 days on hand in operational costs. If you do restrict it, we're at the 111 days shown here on this slide. Does that make some sense? So this is just another evolution of our financial accountability and oversight, and I'm very glad to see this coming, coming together.
The source of the general fund savings amount there, is that, now that was mentioned earlier in the public hearing about rollover from previous years, is that what that shows? Or is that, do we know the source of that?
I do not, and I don't know how long ago that account was opened. I'd have to do some additional research. Generally, what happens when you have rollover from year to year, when I provide you the actual year-to-date numbers, I will bring you what we have left. And generally, that rolls into fund balance and becomes the starting point for your next fiscal year. Council can make the decision to pull apart some of that. Say if it was $200,000 over, they could take $100,000 and put it in savings, and they could put $100,000 and leave it in general fund to raise your number of fund balance days, but that's totally a council decision. Any questions on this? Because I know we've been talking about this for quite a while. So then, looking at your financial summary for all funds, you will see that we do show the general fund separate from fire and parks. As we've mentioned before, that is one of those accounts, or those are both accounts that have had their own checking set up, and we're separate and apart from. In next year's budget, I'd like to see this folded under general fund, so that we can keep all of our accounts for all of our service delivery in one area. I'd like to see general fund in one, and utility fund, which is the enterprise for water and wastewater, in its own separate accounting. But for my purposes, this gives me an understanding of the total budget dollars each year. So you will show that at the bottom, where it says total budget, we have about $5.5 million in expected income for the coming year, and we have about $5.4 million outgoing. So that leaves a difference of $111,000. However, I will tell you that many of the departments, as they go through the year, do not spend as much as has been allocated. And often, we do have funds that are retained or can be put in a savings account or left in fund balance, because often, the departments do not spend as much as they are budgeted to spend. So there are some emergency funds allocated in there, and if, of course, if we don't have one, then we don't expend it. So that number very well may go up, based on how the expenses go for the next year, or it may go down if we have an emergency something.
Are these funds something that we could put into, like a CD or a money market or something?
There are certain ways that you can invest public funds, and while that is a very good idea, you go through generally text pool and make sure that that is insured and it is properly invested. We can do some research as we create our financial policies to see what we do have available to be invested. It's not going to be a lot, but it is something that you are very restricted on how you can invest your public funds. Any other questions about this information? So then, moving forward to the general fund revenue, you do see that this is information that we have reviewed before. Total revenue is predicted to go up about 5% this coming year. As I have said to you, we are conservative in these predictions. I'm not going to be surprised if that number is not more than 5% next year. I also have not factored in everything as it relates to the QT coming in. There are also a few other commercial developments that I have talked to that may be very close to coming to council and P&amp;Z for review, and if that's the case, we will very likely see some changes in this number in the positive way as well for the next fiscal year. Looking at general fund expenditures, this does include administration, which is not just the administrative staff at City Hall, but there are several items that that part of the budget pays for as it relates to the entirety of our community. For instance, the community center, all of the expenditures for this are taken out of the administration budget. So when we recently had to have the air conditions serviced, because this one went out, the one at City Hall was struggling, we pay for that out of the administrative side. But it includes administration, development or code enforcement, the police department, and of course, the municipal courts. You do see that that's about an 8% increase in expenditures for this coming year. A lot of that can be due to the changes that we may see in fuel costs. Some of that's payroll-related. I know we had a conversation, or a resident who mentioned that salaries are scheduled to go up 14% in this budget. That's not actually accurate. It's an on-average increase of 9%. We discussed that at the last two meetings that we had. So if you take things and look at them in a little more of a chunked by department, then yes, it may look like that, but when we ran the numbers, it's an on-average 9% increase. When you look at the next slide, this talks about the fire department revenue. You do see there are a couple of numbers bolded on the right-hand side in the blue. This does account for the two firefighter positions that were authorized at the last meeting. It shows an additional transfer from general fund into fire to pay for those in order to make this fund balance. And you will see that on the Wise County contract, we're also expecting an additional $26,000 from the county this year that was allocated in their current budget on behalf of the work that our firefighter paramedics do for Wise County in this area. So we did factor that into the budget as well. This is a portion of the fire department expenditures. All of these, we have gone over prior to this meeting. You will see that the salary line item and the wages line item is bolded, because we did make some changes at the last meeting. So I tried to call to your attention anything that changed from the last meeting that you discussed this to the current meeting today. When you look at this last slide as it relates to the fire department, you do see a $652 to the good on this particular fund. So we will be watching this as we go through the year. One of the things that the department heads and I are going to continue to do as we move into this next fiscal year, as we have this a little bit more organized, is we will be meeting monthly to review revenue and expenditures to see where we're tracking. There are several different ways that we can adjust expenditures, if necessary, in order to make sure that we're meeting those revenue projections. So this fund is also to the good revenue over expenditures. The next one is the Parks and Recreation Fund, and this may be where we were talking about the events. We did discuss this at a previous, several of the previous meetings, that if council makes a decision throughout the year to amend the budget, to do anything different, we would be able to make that change as we went along. However, the $18,000 that's basically transferred out of general fund into parks takes care of the basic maintenance of both for the year. As mentioned, there were some things that had been planned for the parks and had been put together by the previous Parks Board, but they are no longer meeting. I don't think they have a quorum to meet, and so I'm sure that those will need to be looked at by anyone else who joins the Parks Board and determines if they still want to expend funds in those areas. Any questions on any of those funds before we look at the utility fund overview? Okay, so moving into utility funds, Shayna, you can skip right past that first one. We've discussed what the system contains. Again, under utility fund history, they've been pretty good about making sure that they keep their expenditures in check, and the revenue does show that it has been over expenditures for the last couple of years. When you look at the financial summary as it relates to the utility fund and revenues, you do see that there is an approximate reduction of $91,000 in revenue projections for this coming fiscal year over the last. When I was putting the budget together and put together the last five years' worth of history and tried to create some sort of a trending, that number had been overinflated a little bit, so I wanted to bring it down to make sure that we're being more realistic in what we might realize. We always want to be slightly under instead of over, so we did make that particular adjustment. The next slide shows slide one of the utility fund expenditures, and if you'll go to the next one, Shayna, this also shows the ending slide, and this is where the formula error shows a $1,200 use of fund balance, but that is incorrect. It is actually a positive number. So any questions on utility fund? So as mentioned, the capital improvement plan will be coming back to you over the next couple of months, as we look at what is available to us in bonds, or excuse me, not just in bonds, but in grants and bonds, as it relates to the West Plant and any streets that we intend to do anything about. If council makes the decision to try and put a bond election on the agenda for next May, we will certainly have plenty of time to do so, to research it accurately and properly, and make sure that we've educated everyone before it goes to a vote. You did ask about some further recommendations. There is a line, or excuse me, an agenda item on here about ARPA funds. These are some of the things that we did not discuss. As you will recall, at one of our previous two meetings, your fulcrum representative came and gave you an update on where we are technology-wise. We currently have about 10 computers that are recommended for replacement. Those are, of those 10, six of them are very elderly, and four of them could potentially make it another year, so that's something that council would want to consider. That would bring the cost from $30,000 for the replacement of those computers down to about $18,000 or $19,000. We also have the cloud migration, a cybersecurity bundle, which would be something that I would wholly, wholeheartedly recommend, the Microsoft SharePoint and OneDrive upgrade. So it would be a total investment of about $55,650 and a monthly increase in our payout to our vendor of $2,700. Council can make the decision to do that either through any overages or carryover that we have in the current fiscal year, once we close this year out, or in the coming fiscal year, or they could consider ARPA funds for these expenditures if they so choose. You will also see there are code enforcement opportunities. That's something that has been very important to our residents. It was discussed considerably on our residential surveys that we received. We have talked to the city of Aurora, and they would be interested in partnering with us on a code enforcement officer. They currently use one part-time and would be willing to enter into an agreement to potentially pay $20,000 of the cost for a code enforcement officer. If we wanted to hire one full-time, then they would reimburse us on a quarterly basis, just like they do for the police contract. So that's something else council can consider. Those decisions don't have to be made this evening. We can amend the budget as we go through, but I want you to be aware that these are things that were brought forward by staff, or we've heard from the community that are currently unfunded in this budget There's also been some discussion about a signal light at the Bywell intersection. I don't have a cost on this, as it is a tech stop project, and they are notoriously difficult to get ahold of and try and interact with. But I do know Chief Debus has done a considerable amount of work on this to try and find out if we would qualify for one in this particular area. It's something that we'll continue to pursue in this coming fiscal year, and as we've discussed multiple times, street repair. I did go back and look at the last two budgets and reviewed the Public Works Director's presentation and recommendations to council on streets, and for the past two or three years, it has been brought up multiple times and discussed, and we need to consider at minimum sealing and repairing the streets that we currently have, because the cracking and the alligatoring caused that street to wear out faster. So we're not doing the preventative maintenance, and that's something that I believe we should consider. We also have a utility fund, as we've discussed. These are some items that we could consider as we move forward. We have a 40-year-old dump truck that is not operable, that at some point, we either need to sell it, or auction it, or something to get rid of it. It's fully depreciated, as Jesus will tell you. It's not safe to drive at the moment, so it's just sitting at the East Plant. We also have a 2005 International Vector truck that is also outdated and fully depreciated. That will, it will jet things out of the pipes if you need it, and it will also suck sewer out of the pipes if you need it, which is not pleasant on any day, but we've learned quite a bit about this. And so Jesus's recommendation would be that we potentially trade that in or sell it, but the replacement of a trailer with these type of equipments mounted to it is, it's pricey. It's $170,000. I will tell you, though, we have had need of it since I've been here, and we had to borrow from a neighboring city, and while that's fine every once in a while, I don't know that it'd always be available to us. And the nearest place for us to rent one is in South Arlington. So if we have an emergency, it's going to be very severely affected by getting to South Arlington and retrieving the information, the machine, and then getting it back here and completing the work. So that's something that we would certainly want to look at as we move forward. Utility folks also have three utility trailers that are in various states of disrepair or repair, depending upon how you look at it. I understand from Jesus that some of those have been pieced together. None of them are really working properly. I believe two of them have bent axles. So it would be our recommendation to bring those back to council to sell them and potentially replace them with two other trailers that they could actually use. And one of the other things that's come forward is a sewer camera purchase. We don't currently have one that will go 500 feet. The current unit that they have on staff or with the staff doesn't work, so it's, we don't have that type of machinery that would be very helpful. In the lead and copper issue, and in looking into where we have INI runoff, making sure I get that straight, we would need a 500-foot camera, so we could see manhole to manhole. We don't currently have that either, and the camera cost is about $16,000. So those are all just general things that I would suggest that we look at as we figure out where we close out this current fiscal year, and if we have any retainage in our fund balance as it relates to budgeted versus actual. That's something that I can bring back to you in October, November, to consider once we finish out the current fiscal year. Any questions on these items? So I just would like to provide some clarity on something that was discussed at the podium as it relates to the Aurora contract and the PMB contract. We have escalated the contract with Aurora. We stated that it would be a $60,000 contract price for the next year, which would cover the additional costs as it relates to salary and other things that we expend on behalf of, as well as the PMB contract allows for inflation based on the CPI. So I did reach out to them about that very fact and asked them to, to research it on their end and get back with me, because we will be raising the amount of monies that PMB donates on behalf of the one firefighter and the one police officer, based on the CPI index for this year. Any questions just in general, before we discuss the tax rate and some of that information? So this evening, you do have to adopt, well, you don't have to, but it is very highly recommended that you adopt a budget. We do have a contractual obligation with Wise County to approve a budget and adopt a tax rate by the 15th of September, so we do have a sense of urgency about this. I have explained to you that I have built this budget on the voter approval tax rate, so if you adopt the de minimis rate, or one of the two recommendations that Mr. Loftus brought forward, or the current rate that we have this year, you can choose how to use those funds, or council can give us direction on how to use those funds moving forward. So at this point, the budget itself wouldn't necessarily change, but based on whichever rate you pick, I will need to trade out four pages in your budget document. So Shayna's telling me, before we move on to the tax conversation, she has to have a record vote on the budget. So if you're ready to move forward and don't have questions on that, we're happy to entertain that vote at this time.
I just, well, I want to point out that I looked at the Boyd's budget for this next year, and they're at 66 cents. The MNO, which, if we passed 50 cents, our MNO would be at So their maintenance and operating expenses or taxes that are coming in are helping them. That's, I mean, they're at 66 cents. New Fairview, not a full-service city. We can't even compare to them. I know that I don't want to stay at the very bottom. I just don't know at what rate we want to get to.
Now, here on this tax information page, they show the de minimis amount that would be raised from property taxes at the de minimis rate would be $378,323, correct?
This is comparing last year's budget to the next year's budget. It's where it gets a little complicated in these required, because the de minimis rate is designed to generate an additional $500,000 for the city. But when you compare what we raised last year to the coming year, if you had done- But when you compare what we raised last year to the coming year if you had adopted, it's a slightly different number. Some of that is based on the fact that your INS rate is going down almost nine cents. We did call the young lady at Wise County who's been helping us with that to clarify all of this information, so the least amount it would raise is the 378, yes.
And based on our previous discussions, this would go into the utility fund?
Utility fund does not oversee streets and infrastructure. That's actually out of the development and code fund. So you will see, if you turn the page to number three, excuse me, number four in your budget, you will see that I dropped that money into streets and infrastructure and marked it as restricted for the exact same amount as what it would raise. So that $378,000 would be used wholly for streets and infrastructure repair in the coming fiscal year.
Now, I have noticed that we have an awful lot of labor being committed to the West wastewater plant, and I guess my concern would be, you know, if we did have that money into the street fund, then do we really have the labor to pull it off for the year? That's just my question.
That's a great question, and one that I went back and pulled for the last five years, where have we spent our money on streets? We have generally hired contractors to come in and support, because even with the three individuals that we have on staff, we don't have a streets department. That would double or triple the amount of folks in public works, so it's much more cost-effective for us to hire someone to come in and to oversee that work in, to whatever monetary allocations that we have within those constraints. We've had folks come in and lay down chip seal from the county. We've had folks come in and lay down asphalt from another contracting firm, I believe it's in North Ocean Hills or somewhere in that particular area. I do know that New Fairview has one of those machines that will seal the cracks and potentially fix small potholes that Mr. Cabralas has stated would be available for use if folks needed it, but that's something that in, at some point in time, we're going to need to look into ourselves, because pretty much, I drove through all of Old Town and the streets that had been discussed before, Morris being one of them, and it is in a good amount of disrepair, as well as some of the other streets in that area that kind of run alongside the pharmacy and the one over from that. And I apologize, I don't have all the streets named, memorized at this point. And then I drove over to Bywell, and their streets are in pretty good condition, except for Alliance going in, that has some deterioration, as well as Crown Point has several streets that are going to have to have some cutout and some asphalt reapplied. But if we could get something on tap to seal the cracks sooner rather than later, then we can at least eliminate some of the disrepair that's going to continue to occur. So that's something to look at as we consider which direction. We would have to use consultants and do a minimal amount of work of some of that in-house.
I make a motion to approve the budget as proposed.
And if I can, point of order, which tax rate do you want to look at so I can slide you the right papers?
Okay.
We have to adopt the budget before the tax rate.
I know, it's a little convoluted.
We have to adopt the budget before we adopt the tax rate, correct? Well, I make a motion to adopt the budget, yes.
We already have a motion, so you're seconding?
Do you second my motion?
Okay, a second.
Then we need a record vote.
Mr. Johnson? Ms. Ty?
Aye.
Mr. Loftus?
Aye.
Ms. King?
Aye.
Mr. Schumay?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
All right. Uh, let's go on to the next one, discussion, any necessary action regarding ordinance number 2023-07 ratifying ad valorem property tax revenue reflected in the adopted fiscal year, October 1, 2023 to September 30, 2024, annual budget, record vote required.
I would like to say that I very much can understand the rates of inflation and the difficulties with the economy right now. We feel it in our house. I know everybody feels it. My hope is that we can do something today. The cities that Ms. Mize mentioned, Keller, Southlake, Haslett, that haven't raised their taxes, they did the work years and years ago when they saw the growth coming, and it's our turn. It's our turn to do the work. It's our turn to put the effort in on the front end so that we can be the kind of city that we all want to be. And my hope is that we, within those, when we raise the tax rate a little bit, which I think is very close to what we have now, once we do that, that will also be offset by the reduction in county taxes, the reduction in the, the increase in the homestead exemption. So that is my thinking. I'm in line for the de minimis rate.
And I agree with Ms. King, and I just want to reemphasize, anything over the voter rate is going towards infrastructure, and we already have the budget handled. I'm just making sure I'm right on this, so anything over the voter rate is infrastructure, period.
That is correct.
Okay. I just wanted to reemphasize that.
I guess where I'm at is that if we went with the de minimis rate, we're basically going to burn all of our powder, so to speak, versus if we went with the 38-cent rate, then we have powder available for next year if we need it. And that's, that's where I am.
I'm not quite sure I understand what you're saying.
Well, I think that leaves us future capability if we needed to, to raise rates for when we do have a major infrastructure project.
So if we decided to, say, the, the financial people are coming next meeting, correct? If we decide that, oh, well, we're going to need a revenue bond or some sort of bond that, that is going to be separate from the M&amp;O rate, it will increase the INS rate, correct? We can still do that, and it would, if we were at, I mean theoretically, if we were at 50 cents and we got a bond, it could go higher.
Keep in mind, you have two bonds rolling off, and that's something that we need to be mindful of, that is also misunderstood. You have one bond that only has a $31,000 payment on it for this coming fiscal year, and another bond that will pay off the year after, so you're about to free up about $300,000 over the next two fiscal years in bond indebtedness. Generally, when you take out a bond, the first year you pay interest only. The second year is when you pay both principal and interest, so conceivably, depending upon when the bond is issued, you may have the $300,000 that we're currently paying this year slide off, and the new debt come in, and your debt rate would stay the same. Since we're already reducing it by nine cents this year based on the debt that we've already paid off out of the general fund, that is most definitely a big win for everyone. So we might be able to structure it so that you kind of seamlessly have one and the other, and then it doesn't affect the residents in and of itself. Now, to Mr. Loftus's question, all of these numbers on tax rate will be recalculated next year, so we'll get all brand-new, and the only thing that we're able to keep is what's called the unused increment rate, and it's, it ends up being two or three or $5,000 to some extent, so I'm not sure that that's going to help us too much.
And also, the bond is paid over a 20- to 30-year period-
Yes.
-with a lot more residents-
Yes.
-and businesses potentially coming on-
Yes.
-to help fund that and pay that debt back.
Right. Which is how you want to handle your big, your big investments in your city. You don't want to pay cash for those, because then you put the burden on the 1,900 people who live here now. You're not spreading it out over the next 30 years on the 5,000 people that end up living here. It's just simple, it's, it's a calculation of, of numbers at that rate.
I mean, ideally, I would like to be at around 43, 46, but I don't know how, I don't think that I want to be at the 50.
That's kind of the point I'm trying to make, that, you know, we have a compromise somewhere, I think, where we can satisfy the needs of our citizens and the needs of the city at the same time.
I'm looking at the pages that Mr. Gann put together for us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is very helpful, and it says, what do all the tax rate discussions mean to me? Well, in that, it goes on to say what each rate would generate more than less fiscal year. And so when I look at the 43-cent rate on page four, that only generates 76,000 more than the last fiscal year. So that's my concern, is we're talking about needing big things. We're talking about needing to replace the West Water Treatment Plant. We have some large infrastructure needs now, so I hear, I hear and I understand you saying that when we have the infrastructure projects coming along, but the time to do that is now, in my opinion.
So that's 76,000. If we were at 43 cents and we get, the city approximately gets 76,000 from that, I mean, is that even going to help us with streets?
So the voter approval rate is the 76,000. That, that's on four. If you look at the same rate as we have this year, it generates 211,000. That's number two. Do you see that? Question number two?
Well, this one says 43 cents, so I assumed that that was not the voter approval rate.
You are correct. That may be a typo on that one, but that is the voter approval rate, and it's not 43 cents a day.
Okay.
But in running your numbers, if you look at your tax information page and some of the others that we've put together, for the same rate as this year, the 437815, it generates $3,960 of that is from new valuation.
I, I, I think I understand what it's saying-
I may have it incorrect on that page.
No, no, you don't. It's 43 cents per day that it will decrease-
Yes, it goes down.
-for the voter approval rate.
Yes.
That's, okay. I just saw 43, and I was thinking-
And the difference to the homeowner on a home valued at $230,000 would be for the 43-cent rate, which is what-
The 43 cents is how much it would reduce a day.
No, no. The tax rate, the, the 437 on page two?
Yeah, the 437815, yes.
On page two?
Yes.
So that cost to a homeowner on a $250,000 house would be approximately $106 per year.
A year, yes.
And the difference in changing the rate to the .504186 would be $276.95 per year.
Yes.
Where are you, Mr. Johnson?
I'm still trying to figure this out. I like what he's saying, but I understand what you're saying. So I don't know.
It's a hard decision, because we know that we have needs of the city. We need to repair quite a few things within the city, but we also understand the needs of the citizens, so it's, it's difficult for us to try and figure out, okay, are we going to burden the citizens with $276? And some of them, that's a lot of money per year, so that's, I mean, that's why I'm, I'm torn.
But we can look at other numbers. We can look at-
Yes.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
So we're at 43, and that's at 50, so we could look at-
Mr. Loftus had two other numbers that he brought forward, I believe, 38-
38 cents, yeah.
And then 35-something, I believe. And we ran both of those numbers as well. They're fairly budget-neutral.
I guess my point is that, yeah, we have a lot of infrastructure needs, but we're not going to buy our way out of it with this property tax increase. And so, and then I have to balance our actual city manpower resources, when I'm looking at that, and what they can accomplish with the infrastructure to be, to use it most efficiently. And so that's why I would lean probably at this point the most to the same rate as last year, and that's where I am right now, either that or the 38 cents.
And that's why originally I was saying, if we kept the same rate, we're not increasing, we're not decreasing, so they know what to expect immediately, but we are also getting that extra money to start fixing infrastructure. So if we were looking for a medium, I think keeping the same would be.
What, what happens if, if there's, you know, we're only getting, say, we're only getting 50,000 a year? Is there, if we don't use that 50,000 for infrastructure that's restricted, can it just continue to increase?
Yes. Now, you can't bind future councils, but as long as you are the council members that are sitting in these seats, you can make that decision, yes. Keep in mind, the 211 that the current rate would generate could be added to the 120 that's currently budgeted, so that does increase your spending power just a little bit.
Then the bonds that are getting paid off, that's going to be a plus, right?
Correct. That's part of why your tax rate for this year has gone down already, because we are paying off one bond in this coming fiscal year, and then we'll pay the second one off in the next fiscal year.
So if we kept the tax where it's at now, or bumped it up just a little, we could do that?
You can.
So where it's at now is the .437815.
Yes, ma'am.
I would say something like 4.5.
That's what I was thinking.
That's going to be seven cents higher than yours, Mr. Loftus.
Yeah, but like I said, we're not going to buy our way out of our infrastructure problem with this, so my concern is, yeah, we've got this extra income, revenue, yet we need to spend it wisely and make sure we don't, you know, overtax the resources we have. Can we actually spend $500,000 more?
Can we on streets? Can we, I mean, I'm assuming the streets are in such disrepair, we, we could easily spend a half a million dollars.
Yes.
Not with our labor resources we have.
But we would hire it out. It would be contracted out-
Yes.
-not with our, not with our guys doing.
I'm just pointing it out. Your external resource is going to probably cost you more.
Y'all keep talking about streets. I'm worried about the water and sewer.
Me, too.
That's going to be even more. I mean, that's, there's, we're going to have to do something, we're going to have to get a revenue bond or something to pay for that, and I'm assuming our financial guy will be able to explain that to you at the next meeting.
This isn't going to tackle the big projects, but it will handle the streets and other projects in the meantime, the stuff that needs it.
Especially maintenance. I mean, just like Mr. Gann was saying, that, that they, you've got to continue to maintain those roads, or they're just going to continue to deteriorate.
And I understand that, but if you maintain your roads without water and sewer, the town's going dry, and now you got roads out here with nobody living.
Oh, we're not, we're going to fix the water and wastewater, but this is just completely separate.
Aside from the streets, what else? What other infrastructure to address Mr. Johnson's concerns? What other infrastructure might we?
So the next thing that will come to you is, how do we replace the West Plant, and how do we pursue the, the possibility to drill a couple of wells to get us through the time when we might be able to hook up to a- the time when we might be able to hook up to a larger system? I do know that that's something the entire county is concerned about, but Mr. Dominguez and Mr. Loftus have done some work to reach out to some folks. We've got some meetings coming up, but that is a long-range, multimillion-dollar project that we will want to try and find some alternate funding for, not from our general fund or utility fund. So those will be coming forward. As soon as we get the budget put to bed and we can move past this, then that will be the next thing that I focus on.
But there are some water-related things that-
Yes, ma'am.
-these monies could help with or not.
Not, not this. This would go, well, let me rephrase that.
The infrastructure.
There are some infrastructure pieces that for INI, we might be able to use some of it for that. That would be something that Mr. Dominguez would need to look at and determine how far will our dollar go. And that would have to come at a later date because it's going to take a considerable amount of bid letting. We're going to have to get some idea of exactly what streets need to be done. We have a fairly decent idea. We had a street survey. It's kind of old, but I don't think we've had that many new ones come in. But we need to figure out what condition they're in versus when it was surveyed four, five years ago. And then we can kind of get a more holistic view on where those big-ticket items are going to come from and how we intend to finance those. So if we have some smaller projects, like manhole repair or INI repair of clay pipes, we may be able to do some of that with these funds. It just depends on where it comes in cost-wise.
But when the EPA jumps up and starts fining us, where we going to be if we don't get that fixed?
For TCEQ, from the West Plant, we're working on that. We are working on it as we speak from that standpoint. We sent a letter into TCEQ explaining that council would be taking that up over the next 90 days to make a decision. And they seem to be accepting of that letter, which at least keeps any further fines at abeyance for now. Past that 90-day period or so, we'll have to see what TCEQ tells us. I do believe that our investigator or case contact may have rolled off and we have someone new, but he has resubmitted all those documents to TCEQ and thus far, they seem to be satisfied with what we've provided them. So we are looking at it, but it's going to take a complete replacement of that West Plant.
Right. And you're talking about putting streets in. You're going to start getting fined by them and where we going to be?
Well, we have been fined by them, yeah.
Exactly. But if you keep getting fined, you're going backwards.
Correct. But that's, where does council want to put this money? If you choose to try and keep the rate at a higher amount to generate extra money, it needs to be restricted for streets and infrastructure. And then you decide, do you want it to go to infrastructure or do you want it to go to streets? We'd have to bring the projects back to you to make that decision. That's not staff's decision.
So that amount of money that's going to go into that restricted fund, that's not, that's not going to even touch what we need to pay for the wastewater plant? So we're going to have to figure out other funds, but we're, we're going to do that pretty quick. We have to do that pretty quick.
According to her, you got 30 days.
Not, not 30 days, no. We had 90 days to deal with the issue that they, it originally started in 2016, but I think we have that about completed at this point. If we continue to have bigger rain events and we have runoff, then they will start looking our direction again. By then, I'm hopeful that we will have a plan forward. The last, what do they call it, Mr. Dominguez? The predicted cost was almost $7 million for the West Plant. We need to figure out what does that mean to us and how do we possibly fund that? Or even is that number too high? Because when you look at it from a private vendor versus what we receive from our engineering firm, the numbers are very different. So we need to dive into that a little bit deeper.
Now, the city administrator mentioned INI. And my understanding of that is it's water, runoff water that's going into our sewer system, which really shouldn't be there, and that's part of our problem. And I don't know the size of the problem, but I'd say that's where those funds between streets and INI, INI will help the wastewater situation and then anything for streets. So that's the best we can do, I think, with the funds we have.
So I took a tour of the West, West Plant and it's completely full right now. I mean, it's, it's beyond its, its capability right now. And it's not raining. It hasn't rained, you know? So in the winter time, when it starts raining all the time and you can't, it doesn't dry because it's cold and rainy and wet, it's going to, it overflows. So that is, not only in the summer is it doing bad because it's filling up and it's completely at capacity. At the winter, it, it just goes completely over.
So that's all part of the capital improvement plan that we need to continue to work through and bring back as an amendment to this budget or an addendum to it. Once we figure out what grants are available to us, what low-interest loans, what TWDB can do, what GrantWorks can help us to secure, because that's a sizable expense for our community and we'll need to explore every avenue.
And that's why I mentioned in announcements about that meeting that we can schedule with the Texas Water Development Board, where they will explain to us our current options based on the current law that's been passed.
And, and our finance guy will be here next meeting that can, can kind of give us an idea of what we can afford, what we need to do to get it and all those things.
And you said you had more, I want to say customers, but that ain't right, businesses looking at moving in?
Yes.
Big businesses or small ones?
Mostly small at the moment. We also have some folks coming forward about small parcels here and there to fill in with housing in small numbers. We'll see how that comes about. As I mentioned before, I'm, I'm talking with Prairie Point again, so we may have a developer for that, for that particular section, which is 300 acres already in the city limits. So that would be a, a significant change in our budget numbers for that if it comes on, online.
And what type of tax breaks are you looking at giving them?
None at the moment. It just depends on what they bring forward. We're in very early conversations about this.
Well, that's what I'm getting aggravated about, you giving all these businesses tax breaks and then you wanting to put the burden back on the residents.
It probably seems that way, but I'm not fond of tax breaks for businesses in that regard. I'm not fond of the city having to pay more than their fair share. But there are some arguments to be made in the long run if you consider some sort of incentive to draw them to the community for what you may get in two or three or five years. That's at council's discretion. I don't set those and I don't approve those. That's council's decision.
And keep in mind that the QuickTrip and the PMB contracts were done before Mr. Gann-
All of us, pretty much, yeah.
Okay. I think we're all in agreement, the medium, or I guess the meeting in the middle is 45 or .45?
Either that or keeping it what we are at right now.
I'd rather go the lower route and keep it where it is right now, if that's what we're discussing.
Okay. I'll make a motion to keep the tax rate the same.
At the 43 cents?
Yes.
I'll second that.
I will also need a record vote on this one.
Can I ask a question before we vote? Or no questions now?
Ask your question.
Okay. So is that 43, is that what the budget was built on?
No. It was built on the voter approval tax rate, but it does have of 335-something, but anything over and above that is earmarked for streets and infrastructure only.
All right. Your real call.
All right. Johnson? Ty?
Aye.
Loftus?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Shumay?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Roll on along. Number three, American Rescue Act Plan Funds Review, and that's Mr. Loftus.
Yeah, the last time this was discussed in the meeting, I think a lot, at least a couple of us had only been here a meeting or two. I was kind of, yeah, yeah. So I just wanted to get an update. The last thing I would want to have happen is that we don't spend that money and it somehow goes to Ukraine.
When was the deadline? It was at the end of the year or fiscal year? Fiscal year or calendar?
The end of the calendar year and it doesn't have to be spent, it has to be committed. So that's something we can talk about with GrantWorks as well next week. Now, the gentleman that's coming is not the person who's administering that portion of the ARPA funds, but we have talked with them about some of that we've spent thus far. We'll need to talk about some as we go along. As I mentioned, we do have those computer needs that could be funded out of there if council so chooses. The one that- highly is that cybersecurity package to make sure that we are not, we're well-protected as we can be. Let me put it that way. We're never completely in the clear, but as well-protected as possible.
What was the amount of the funds that are available?
It was, we have about $180,000 that's left.
At some point, we had 200 and something. What'd we spend it on?
Council has allocated it for professional services and repairs to the fire truck.
And could we use that for technology, too? Right?
Yes.
Since it's on the agenda, can we make a motion to use those funds tonight?
That's your prerogative to do, yes.
Could that money, before you do that, could that money not be used towards the sewage repairs? I believe that that was an allowable expense under the ARPA.
I'd have to ask GrantWorks, I'm not certain. It's for operational costs, I know that, or things directly related to COVID or-
Because one of those things were infrastructure, one of their-
It's very possible.
Yeah. That's what I would, I, if it could be used towards a sewage plant, that'd be a nice, I mean, it's, it's not going to cover everything, but it goes towards it. It's like if you want to buy something, you know, you save up your money, you know, over a period of time so that you got enough money for a down payment. You save up your money for a period of time.
Yeah, if we don't use it by the end of the year, we lose it.
I see.
So I, I think the technology would be a good expenditure for it. If it could go to INI, I think that would be a good expenditure for it.
Can it go to the code enforcement partnership with Aurora? No.
So I know that the other departments had items on their list that they, we could possibly use for those ARPA funds. Can we bring those items back at the next one then?
Yes.
Okay.
So maybe that's something where we could get a, a list of items that are candidates. We've got a partial list, it's kind of spread out. If we could get that together prior to the next meeting, then maybe we can all look at it and have, agree on something.
But staff is bringing you now recommendations for, they've included their recommendations here in the 2324 budget. We know things-
There are a couple of others that I think Chief Debus would want to speak to as it relates to the software for the police department for case management system, I believe is what he called it. He's also mentioned something about that dispatch fee issue, that that could be used for some of that.
Was that already included in the budget-
No.
-for next year?
Yeah, that's why I was thinking maybe we could get that full list and then kind of go from there.
I think technology, green light for that. I mean, because updating all their computers, everything, I'm, please do it.
It's $67,650 estimated cost to update the technology.
Plus the monthly fees, yes, for the next year.
I know there was some rescue equipment with the fire department also.
Yes, some extrication tools.
That was desire, that seemed very, like a very good, worthy expenditure also.
Did we allocate that already?
No.
No?
It seems like we put it off till the next meeting and review it, I think, will be good.
All right. Good. Number four, Weiss County Appraisal District nominations.
Thank you, Mayor. You do have in your pocket information that the county appraisal district sent to us. If council has nominations for individuals to serve on that board of directors, you do have five spots that you could nominate five people. Then you have 27 votes that you can cast, or 27 or 37, I'd need to look, but we need to get them by October if you know of names that you want to submit. So I'm bringing this to you now to find out what's council's appetite. Do you know folks that you want to put forward or have you considered this in the past? I know this is fairly standard in other cities I've worked with.
I don't know that we've ever nominated people for it.
Well, if you want to give it some thought, I can put it on the agenda for next time and then if you do have some feedback relative to that, then bring it up and we can make that nomination. It does have to be done by resolution, but we still have enough time to make that happen.
What is the time commitment for these individuals?
That's a great question, but I did not see any documentation as to the time commitment in the letter that they sent us.
Is it a paid position?
No, I don't think it is.
Is it similar to a board? I guess I just don't know exactly what they do.
I'll see if I can find out some information.
They tell people that dispute their taxes? No. No, it's- All right. So we're going to talk about that in the next council meeting. Okay. I believe we're down to executive session. Do you have something scheduled for that?
Ma'am, I do not.
All right. Future items, other than what we've already talked about?
Yes, I would like to discuss the engineering firm and if we want to continue with our current engineering firm, because I know we're going to be using engineering a lot, probably.
I'm glad you brought that up. Thought about that myself. Okay? Anything else? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
You got it.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're out of here.